Yeah, they do not decide because it's beyond four inches, over four inches.
All right.
They come in and.
Shall we call ourselves to order? Yes. All right, let's. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance and then the roll call. That's another order on the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Kathleen.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brazil, absent. Carrie.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Ryder.
Present.
You have a forum, also present is Township Manager Berger.
There is no one else physically present here, but do we have people participating remotely?
We do, we have five.
Okay. And the next item is adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Yeah. Okay, so you have a motion to adopt the agenda from Palmer, support from Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Now we have time for public comment.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. First up is Rob Pattinson. Hi, Rob.
Hi, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. Yesterday at the DDA meeting, Bob Stites announced that public comments from those participating by Zoom were no longer welcome. I believe this is a massive mistake on the part of the DDA. You are leaving Scioto Township wide open to lawsuits. I don't believe it meets with the OMA. And there's also the ADA. And interestingly enough, Bob Stites made this announcement when the ADA statement is made on the bottom of the DDA agenda. So it makes no sense that people who can't be there in person for numerous reasons are blocked from having, being able to address the DDA. I believe the perfect example of why that's important is that at yesterday's DDA meeting, Ryan Yapple was left off of the Finance Subcommittee that they were putting together. Ryan Yapple has proved himself by saving this township millions of dollars by getting us out of the Credit Suisse and numerous other examples of him helping this township save money and avoid losing money, more importantly. Ryan Yapple is extremely capable in finance and should be part of this DDA committee. And because the public was not welcome to make any comment, that could not be brought to the attention of the DDA. And so I make that point now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. Any other interested publics? I see none. Will, can I make a response?
Sure.
I just want to flag Rob's comments and suggest that we took up that during the policy on OMA when our attorney is here to give clarity about if our policy covers the DDA or not. I think I know the answers, but would like to talk about what we could do to compel better behaviors.
Okay. I will also respond in that I'm unclear what the Finance Committee is that Rob was referring to. I don't recall from the meeting, and I'm looking through my notes just now, the DDA meeting, that is, that there was a Finance Committee formed or that Ryan was omitted. So I'm not sure what that's about, but I do know that.
I can clarify that for you if you like.
Oh, okay.
Remember at the end of the meeting, Bob Stites said, I can't be part of this Subcommittee because I'm a financial advisor. So my license prevents me from being part of this Subcommittee. I can't remember who the other members were, but Ryan Yapple clearly was the clear choice to be part of that that committee and was omitted.
I I don't. Rob, I will look into it, but I don't think that a committee was actually formed. I do remember now that Bob said something about his profession of not allowing him to be involved in something. But I don't think that we actually took action to form any kind of a committee. But I'll look into it and see. The announcement about the DDA's policy in terms of being physically present for public comment was announced at the prior DDA meeting. So it wasn't just announced at yesterday.
Was that, was that a procedure that there was a vote on?
I can't recall whether we took a vote on it, but it was some meeting, I think the prior regular meeting, but it may have been the special. I'm not sure.
And, and Will, we do have one more hand from Pam Boyd.
Sure.
Okay. Pam, hi.
Hi, thank you, Pam Boyd. Along that DDA meeting conversation, it's my understanding, listening to the meeting where Chair Stites makes the declaration, there won't be any Zoom comments. I don't believe that that committee voted on it. That was a single chairperson's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. More than interested hands. Oh, there is interested public notified by raising their hands. Jonathan Greenberg, hi.
Hey, everyone. Jonathan Greenberg, Scioto Township, longtime resident. I think the real issue is that Bob Stites doesn't like any kind of criticism of himself. He's got a real thin skin. And so when people make comments from Zoom that he perceives are critical of him or his committee, he reacts like a big buffoon and yells at you or tells you that he's going to come by your house and see you sometime like he did to me. It's on the tape, it's on the video. He's kind of a bully. And so he probably doesn't like hearing any criticism of himself. But I don't think that's a reason for him to decide that we shouldn't have Zoom comments. Maybe a reason he should seek some help, but not really limit the residents. That's just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. That's all.
Okay, well, let's move on then to the only item, which is the proposed policy to standardize process to appoint members to Township Committees. And for Flintoff, you prepared this, so please lead us through your proposal.
Sure, yeah, thanks so much, everybody, for meeting on this. No, I presented it for discussion on November 28th. We got some input from the Township Attorney, Manager, and Supervisor that's integrated in here. Haven't gotten suggestions from anybody else yet, so anxious to hear them. The purpose of this, it's a pretty standard thing that most jurisdictions have, is just sort of a protocol. We've done a better job of doing outreach, a better job of getting new people involved, but we haven't always treated appointments evenly. We haven't always advertised, we haven't always stayed on top of our vacancies. And so the purpose of this policy is to really try to standardize it and get a good balance, a diversity of perspectives, people have been on committees, and also new people to the committees too. So should we kind of go through it section by section and discuss? Or does anybody want to start with any general comments about having such a policy?
If I could start with a general question, I have the one K-12 from November 28th. How does, how does it mostly differ from that one?
What changes, like what's good stuff? Well, there's probably about like 80 edits.
Okay, okay.
So it's hard to describe.
All right. I had both of them.
Yeah, I mean, the overall thing, but we did address a couple of issues, a couple of changes, which we can go down to. It's mostly in the process section where there are changes.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
So that's really the purpose, things to kind of have things standard, have us stay on top of things, treat everybody evenly, as I know we all intend to do. The application of the policy would apply to all board appointments to Township Committees that are comprised entirely or primarily of members of the community. So it doesn't apply to things like, you know, a committee where it's all board members, you know, or staff people, budget and finance election, stuff like that. It just applies to board committees, be them at, you know, be them term limited, like fire services guidance committee or longstanding. They don't have to, they include those required by statute as well as those created by the board. And as a reference, is the chart I've shared a couple of times that's up to date, I believe, the seat requirements. So you can see at least currently which committees this policy would apply to. And it might be helpful to kind of look at it side by side so you can think through the various scenarios. So it also doesn't apply to board appointments to, say, Warmah Dexter District Library here on River Watershed Council, any of those non-isle bodies.
Semper.
Right. It applies to, you know, new terms, reappointments, the subsequent terms, partial terms, any, any reason, way, shape, or form, there's an opening in a committee that applies. So kind of questions or thoughts about application? Thank you.
Just make a comment. It's always been difficult to get people to either volunteer or if they were asked, I mean, that's historical, okay? Maybe with the process where we actually do some really good advertising with the technology we have today, it will create more interest because we have a lot more people there for percentage wise. And there's more interest, even if it's only a handful more, it's there. It's there. So I think it's, it helps to keep everything even.
I agree with what Donna said. This seems reasonable, positive to me.
And Jeff, thank you for taking my call earlier. It was nice to be able to talk to you offline about and answer some of my questions. And I'm looking at page two and it says, unless prohibited by statute, all newly formed committees, and the newly formed committees, we spoke about newly formed committees formed by the Board of Trustees, correct? And then the Board of Trustees shall work diligently to standardize the expiration of all boards. By that, we're talking all existing boards and new boards. So and the, and the the tricky part is going to, how do we orderly transition to getting the June 30th, which coincides with a payroll date? And let staff know, oh, we got boards and commissions coming, and it triggers certain deadlines.
You can do a big push on the community. Hi, Tom.
Okay.
So could I add or ask about that? So the June 30th, so if we, if somebody was appointed and then their term would, let's say, end in September, but they're appointed because somebody else is leaving. I don't, I'm coming up with a scenario, but then it would be shortened, their appointment would be shortened to that June.
Generally, it depends on the body. But yes, it would be, would be shortened to that. So in our prior meetings, you know, I mean, this is going to.
Reappoint.
The reappoint.
The successors.
Yeah, the successors appointment. So it's going to take several years and we'll never be completely on track. But right now we have, I think, 25 different dates. So any consolidation. So and I think, I know that was a point we just discussed. It certainly wouldn't be to shorten anybody's terms. There's also good policy reasons to sometimes shorten a term. And there's a need to stagger where we haven't been staggering as we did with PC to get kind of committees back on track.
So just if I could clarify what what Julian, the point that Julian was just raising. So the terms of people who are currently appointed, wouldn't, we wouldn't like try to retroactively shorten them. It would be for either someone who resigns and we're appointing someone to fill a vacancy that occurs.
Reappointments.
And or new appointments or new committees that are being formed, we would try, or the board would try and align them to this new deadline or this new goal. And and we talked about making sure that the language of this or the resolution, I didn't look at it, I that that it would sort of resolve the fact that if we run counter to some of the other existing.
And we've got that in there, that last sentence of that paragraph. If there's a conflict between the committee charge and this policy, this provision of the policy will control.
Okay, so that, I think that resolves some questions that might come up because we do have language in some of the charges or ordinances or wherever that says someone who's appointed to fill a vacancy will serve out the term of the person who they're replacing. And that could be interpreted to be whatever that appointment was.
But, but on that point, well, it's actually if there's a conflict between the committee charge and this policy. So we need to make that more clear because it's not an ordinance. There's a conflict between the ordinance and this policy that ordinance controls. But we need to maybe make more clarifying language to say a committee charge, you know, you know, by motion or resolution, something to make that more plain.
Or if we really, if the board really wants to, you know, tackle all of the potential situations where that could occur, it may require changing some other language. It may even, even a policy like this couldn't control. I don't know, and I think it's maybe more a question for our attorneys.
Yeah, I think what Mariah was suggesting here, because we worked on this language together, and maybe I just didn't get it quite right. I think it's, it's that if there's a conflict between a committee charge, I mean, committee charge, we only do committee charges by motion or resolution. We don't do committee charges by ordinance, but we could make that more plain.
Could we clean up the committee charges? With that as part of, so there's that, there's a lot of different, you know, if we have a policy that states this, but then somebody's reading, you know, why don't we just clean up those resolutions as well?
That could be a really good next step, Julian.
So could I?
Could I?
At least one of these.
Yeah, it's on the chart, it's just the LPC, that's by ordinance.
Okay, that's the one I'm thinking of. So that's the one where you might run into a conflict that you couldn't just overcome with a policy.
So the, so the process is really, you know, a lot of it's just set forth by statute, a lot of it's set forth by practice and just kind of how we've been informally doing things the last few years. And so it just kind of largely just documents that. You know, part of my job is to keep, keep the oaths and the records, get people sworn in when they need to. There's three bodies that the supervisor appoints to. And then there's five bodies that any board member may nominate a member to.
Or probably consult them.
They can apply.
No.
Well, if they applied online, is that a nomination?
No.
It's an application.
We're going to go through the process. So a board member may nominate. We nominate.
So we force them to apply online?
Nope. And that's one of the problems we're going to solve because we have nominated people who haven't applied. This is intended to change that. You heard me right. If a committee member resigns prior to the end of their term, the committee member should notify the committee chairperson and the Board of Trustees as a whole in writing of their resignation and the effective date of resignation. So it's just a request for people to communicate. So a committee member is going to resign. Don't just tell the committee chair, don't just tell the board liaison, don't just tell the supervisor, don't just tell the clerk. Tell the whole board and your committee chair.
Yeah, the chair should pass that along to the members. And encourage them, yeah.
So, so people, our boards and commissions are going to be filled by board nominating, self-nominations or applications, we'll call it, right?
Applications.
Applications. Applications. And then interest in renewal by existing.
Right.
And then some of which are statutory. Those are the, those are the statutory self, you know, board nominations, re-up, re-renewals, and then the application.
Those are all board nominations, the two categories.
Okay, but I'm, but, but people can also obviously apply on the website.
Well, so let's go through the process because, because I think how we're using apply is different. But I just want to be clear, it's only the board who can nominate, there is no self-nomination. That's not a thing unless you're a board member. I understand people raising their hand and wanting to apply, but it's like a step.
Right, so if, okay, so if they, yeah, we're going to put this out to the public for them to go to the website.
Yeah.
And what happens?
Can I, can I go through the process?
Yeah, I'll start with that one, not a nomination, but an application.
No, John has confused it. There's always a nomination and there's always an application. The application, the application from a new person or the letter of interest from somebody who's already serving comes first, always. Step two. A person may or may not be nominated. Step three, board vote. Okay, okay, and I just say that to be clear about how we're using this language because we talked around this a lot about what we mean by certain words. So, okay, so the first thing is if somebody's going to resign, they let the board and their chairperson know. The clerk who designated will publish all of this stuff. You know, update the committee emails, this is stuff that we already do. Okay, the paperwork, you know, making sure people have keys, know how to, you know, if they need a Zoom login updated, blah, blah, blah.
Jess, while we're on that subject, I made some notes on that. Could we have an onboarding packet of some sort? So that would be simply what you're talking about, but then also the email addresses of the committees, the committee members that they're joining or potentially joining. No, I guess.
Instead of the email group, because we want them in the email group.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that it's a sci-o email.
Right, but just a packet so that they, and also I would really love to see committee members take the OMA Governance Academy video, you know, to have some type of education. If there's a statute that, that applies to their committee, they need to read that, you know, just the basics, the resolution that, so they're informed.
I can do something basic.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And it's also ties into the OMA policy too, which says that, you know, once a year, we're going to get people the AG's OMA packet and stuff like that.
Yeah, and the PC has an orientation class, but it's a little more detailed than like roads.
I think MTA does things with like planning and CBAs simply because of their statute.
And they have classes, I believe.
They encourage class, that's for sure. Make it strong, make it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I just, you know, I just don't.
That's good, like a standard orientation.
Yeah.
That's good.
Or modify to that committee.
Would that be a separate policy or would that be part of this? Because we're talking about the appointment policy right now.
Well, yeah, but I think an orientation.
I agree, it's important, but maybe that's an onboarding or maybe that's.
Maybe, but like when we're doing, you know, I9s and getting people, I mean, saying, you know, getting them sworn in, that is a nice time to say, you know, here's a, when I say packet, I'm talking about a prepaid packet. You know, like here's the boom, 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 welcome to Township Hall. You know, here's who you can ask, you know, for help if you're here. Yeah.
Here's where you can find more information about your committee's charge.
Yeah.
Which should.
Call it a welcome packet. Because it's certainly not going to be anything like the, you know, PC classes.
Well, the Planning Commission has, you know, particular responsibility that it kind of requires people to step up and get a little bit more oriented.
Can I call it a welcome packet, just a matter of fact?
Orientation, welcome on.
My new house.
Okay, orientation.
Quibble on what it's called. Yeah, I'll take leave, I'll be right back.
Do that. So, "An open application form for community members interested in applying to serve on one or more committees shall be published on the Township website." We did that. "A version of the form shall be a letter of interest for current members interested in continuing to serve a subsequent term." So when a person submits a form, automated acknowledgement will be set. File of applications will be kept for review by Township officers when considering appointments to committee openings." So this would just be a few tweaks to the form, but basically it'd be, you'd go to the form, you'd be like, are you new or already on a committee? You know, kind of a tree. And then the first one is application, the second one is, you know, a letter of interest, you know, confirming information, expressing interest. Right now, you know, they, they come in in the CMS, the backend of our website. So anybody on this board can be automatically notified when, when we get those. So just let me know if you, you want to be. But they're all here. I mean, right now I get pinged, Will gets pinged, and Mark Thompson still gets pinged. I'll update that. But I'm just saying, anybody can be pinged if you want to. Let me know. But two, this is an edit I made based on Will's suggestion that a file of applications will be kept for review by Township officers. It is not necessarily published, it is not necessarily fully presented in a board packet. And this has been an item we debated, and Kathy, I know you've said before that you want to have all the applications available, but do you want, which they are and would continue to be, but is it important to have all the applications published? Because we want to balance that against not, you know, having people's info out there if we're not serious about considering them.
Well, it's a very sad ability to.
That's okay.
Subject to the point, so.
We don't need their, you know, social security in their firstborn. I mean, we just need to, you know, why they're applying and.
Well, I, maybe I can clarify a little bit. I, my hope is that it won't be a situation where there's kind of a a call for applicants just when we have a vacancy, but that it will be an ongoing effort to let people know that there's an opportunity to serve in that vacancies occur from time to time. We don't know exactly when they're going to occur. And to having that kind of file of people who've expressed an interest, I think is helpful rather than sort of having to beat the bushes to get applicants, you know, whenever that vacancy is due to occur. I mean, we may be in that position. But I think if we, on a regular basis, which we do somewhat, but I think, you know, we could do more our soliciting applications, then we could have that file and you could go to it at any time and see which boards and commissions, different applicants have expressed an interest in. And you might see somebody's application and say, well, they didn't express an interest in serving on, I don't know, the Rhodes Advisory Committee, but look, you know, look at their resume that, you know, maybe they just didn't think of it, let's ask them.
So on the, when they, on the, on the form, on the website, does it say which committee you're interested in? Then you can check up the box, it does.
I'm not sure exactly how it works, but you can indicate which ones you have an interest in.
People list multiple ones sometimes.
Okay, I guess I should visit that page.
Yeah, and it, and we can improve the form. I would suggest in addition that if, if we do publish applications, that we will retract the addresses, email, phone, or any similar information. That's made me very uncomfortable when we publish board packets and kind of have, you know, resumes are there, it's fine. I mean, I always verify if somebody's actually a resident. If I don't know, I don't think we need their address in the email. That's acceptable.
Yeah, that's fine, it's fine.
So you guys are leaning towards publishing all apps?
No, no, I don't.
Oh, if we do it, okay, so.
On a case by case, if published. Like even like when a nomination comes forward, we do that all the time. We put something in a packet and it's got somebody's cell phone. I don't think we need to do that.
No, 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 I think you're right. We should be guarding people's personal contact information a little bit more. But, okay, so I understand better now what you're talking about.
Okay. Unless otherwise required by statute or ordinance, we would prioritize those that are expiring soonest. Meaning, the seats that are expiring the soonest shall be considered first by the Board of Trustees.
I have a question, um, so the seats, okay, so then we have a new member, let's say the new member finishes. And they, the, and it's tiered, or the term limits.
Staggered.
Staggered, staggered, yeah, so the first year, let's say it's one year, so that new person only has one year. And they would have to reapply, and when they reapply, would they get another year, or would it go to the next two years, or however it's.
That's gonna depend on the charge of the committee.
Okay.
If you're trying to stagger it, um, after the staggered term, the shorter staggered term, then typically you would be, uh, then the person is being reappointed, they'd be reappointed to a full term. So if it's a three-year term ordinarily, but you're, they're starting off from a staggered position, and that was a one-year term that they had originally, then you would be, if, if they were reappointed, it would be two or three years.
It would, okay, yeah, I wouldn't, I was just, I'm thinking that if somebody was appointed for five years, and then we have one person that's appointed to one, and they had to keep rea- being reappointed to one.
So Jillian, but, but your comment made me realize that this isn't that clear. Um, what I mean by nearest expiration of term is nearest expiration date. Nearest end date, such as if you look at the chart, right, I mean, we've got ba- two vacancies on the Rhodes Committee. One vacancy on the Compensation Commission. So I would, this policy would mean that this board would next hear the appointments where we have, you know, seats already expired. And then we would move through, so we would handle a seat expiring, um, two twenty-eight, twenty-four, before we would handle the expiration of a seat in twenty twenty-five. I mean, it's, it's logical, but we haven't always done it, we've picked and chose. So, so what this would mean is we're gonna prioritize vacancies, and then the, the next up, whoever, you know, something that's expired.
Like, is there like a queue that, where people are, like, I, I'm not sure what the problem is that's to be, that's being solved by that.
Um, we have unfilled seats, and it's a way to also provide kind of a standard way for the board to consider vacancies, that we consider those expiring the soonest first.
Well, in the two cases, the two examples again, there's sort of different circumstances, in the one case, the Road Advisory Committee is, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jillian, has taken a position, although it, I don't know, that it's been formally communicated that it wants to downsize, so those two vacancies are, are, are not going to be filled, because those seats are gonna go away.
But, I mean, I'm just saying, we, we need, it's, we need a way to, I mean, honestly, Mariah suggested we strike this, because she said Jessica, isn't that totally obvious? Do you guys really need that in there? And I said, no, I think we do. But, so if it's not by earliest expiration, how are we gonna fairly consider appointments? I think nearest expiration is logical, it keeps us on track.
Um, I can just imagine circumstances where you might choose to prioritize something that isn't as urgent, for example, Compensation Commission doesn't meet again until twenty twenty-five. Is that because that seat is vacant and it expired, more urgent than, say, uh, a seat on the Planning Commission, which meets twice a month and considers matters that, you know, come to the Board of Trustees.
Compensation.
That's one suggesting a policy.
Statute, that's a statute as far as the urgency.
By statute, we should have already appointed somebody, um, to the Compensation Commission.
Does that happen in the Planning Commission's state statute?
There's different statutes that apply to the different bodies, some of them don't have statutes that apply to them.
So, so that's why it says unless otherwise, unless prohibited by statute or, unless otherwise required by statute or ordinance. So we would be placing by policy this requirement on ourselves, that we deal with the one that expires first.
Well, given that, given that it's kind of confusing, I would omit that part, and as Mariah said, just, you know, use common sense.
Well, we, we clearly don't agree though, on what should we prioritize for board agendas. You know, I mean, and so if it's not by nearest expiration, it's gotta be something fair, I mean, the whole purpose of.
Well, yeah, you keep saying fair, but I'm not sure that it's a question of fairness, it's a question of, I, I think, you just said the quiet part out loud, it's trying to control the board agenda, and I think the rules of order place the, you know, board agenda under the township manager and the township supervisor. And if you want to create a policy that, you know, somehow controls what goes on the agenda, then why don't you change the rules of order instead?
Well, I think the policies can work in tandem, they're both just policies, so it just says that the Board of Trustees should prioritize. It doesn't, you know, I mean, mandate, it just.
Okay, well, that's different, that's different than what you said a moment ago, you said this is, uh, you're holding ourselves to a policy. If it's just, if it's just a should, then, you know, I, I could, I, I could support it, but if it's.
Yeah.
To become.
It's right here, it says the Board of Trustees should prioritize.
Okay.
Do you have a copy?
So this is, we're just talking about the vacant, vacancies right now.
Yeah.
So, there's, well, two, three.
No, Will, I'm curious, do you have a copy or do you need a copy?
Why? No, I have a copy, I went out and made copies.
Okay, okay. Okay, so yeah, it just says should prioritize.
And speaking of, um, well, the roads, I was waiting for this policy, however this is gonna work out for us to bring the resolution to change from, what is it, eight to seven? No, nine to seven?
Nine to seven.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so it says that we should, and I, I would add the nearest expiration date, nearest term expiration date. To make that more clear. Then the next one is, um, what we've already kind of talked about, unless prohibited by statute or ordinance, such as with the Board of Review. All newly formed committees will have appointments expiring on June thirtieth, so if we create a new committee tomorrow, we're gonna say, hey, your, you know, terms will start July one. For all existing committees, we'll do our best to work toward that in a reasonable way. It will take years, it's okay if it's not perfect, but to get more people kind of, so we can do better recruiting and onboarding. That's the thought.
Well, is it, is it less a question of when their terms start than when their terms end? So if we created. Well, not really, you just said your terms will start on July one, I think what it really means, I, I'm guessing what this means is if we created a new committee and appointed it tomorrow.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's what I said.
Their terms would, whatever their terms were, they would end on June thirtieth.
Yeah, so it says unless prohibited by statute or ordinance, all newly formed committees will have appointments expiring on June thirtieth.
Okay.
So if we had a committee that we created today, fill the spots tomorrow, those members would have staggered terms. And then they would have.
End dates would be on a June thirty.
And then you would probably.
Different years.
We wouldn't start the committee on July first, we would.
Yeah.
Have them, they would have six months.
Right.
In addition, okay. We're gonna get there.
Does that make sense?
It is a hard thing to think through in the abstract.
Yeah.
And then the next is unless otherwise required by statute or ordinance, will appoint or confirm appointment of people to staggered terms, staggered so that roughly the same number of committee seats expire each year.
Is it will or shall? Mine says shall, this is.
Yep, shall.
Okay, because there's a significant difference in those two words.
Are you comfortable with that, Donna?
Yeah, am I?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was just wondering what yours, what you said versus what's. Make sure we have the right wording.
And then, this is what puts some, um, discipline on the process. Is you'll start to see at least a hundred and twenty days ahead of a expiration date, ninety and at least sixty days. Okay, there's gonna be three steps. So at least a hundred and twenty days prior to the expiration of each committee seat term. So, got a committee, somebody's term is expiring, the clerk shall provide notice that the term is ending to the committee member whose term is expiring to the committee chairperson and to the Board of Trustees. Okay, so up to four months, right? Everybody's gonna know, the clerk will ask that the committee member submit a letter of interest form, the online form, if interested in being considered for appointment to a subsequent term. And the board encourages committee chairs to engage the member whose term is expiring in a discussion about the appointment.
Will that be interpreted to always be a hundred and twenty days, because that's a long time. That's four months.
Yeah, oh, you know what, Donna, I, I, I mean.
Get the process going, but if we're, if we're, well, that's, wait, that is for, if they wanna continue. But if they don't, then we need to have applicants.
Yeah, so Donna, that's why it's four months out, because if they say, if they say yes or no, but if they say yes, then we need time for it to come to the board, the board says up or down. If they say down, we need time to recruit new people.
Oh, okay, so. In that four months, if they, let's say they want to continue.
Yeah.
They would reapply, and then we could appoint them within that four months before their term is over.
Yeah, the whole idea is to do appointments before they've.
Yeah, okay.
We, 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 we talked about this, how far out to have the notice, and I agree, and, you know, but until we try it, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll really know, and it does allow a, a, a buffer, a buffer for, um, people to have that conversation. And just, you know, indicate what their hopes is in terms of their reappointment.
Right, because they may have things they like it.
So what this policy does is it provides the courtesy and preference to people who are already serving. To first ask them, are they interested? Then, for appointments to the three bodies that will, um, appoint people to.
Supervisor.
The supervisor, um, the supervisor, um, for Compensation Commission, DDA and Planning Commission. If the supervisor would like to appoint a committee member to a subsequent term, the supervisor should bring the appointment to the Board of Trustees for consideration. For all other committees, if any member of the board would like to nominate a committee member to a subsequent term, that member should bring the appointment to the Board of Trustees for consideration. The Board of Trustees may confirm the appointment slash appoint the nominee to the committee at that time. If the board does not confirm the appointment or appoint the nominee, depending on the situation, to the committee at that time, the clerk shall proceed with the outreach described below. So an example, the supervisor brought a nomination to the Compensation Commission. The board did not confirm that appointment. So then, the next step happens.
In that case, it's the supervisor who would take the next step, it's not the clerk.
Right, for the three.
For those three.
They have a statutory duty.
But for other, for other committees other than those committees.
Okay, this is different than what we talked about, Will, and I'm open to it, I just wanna be clear, we're talking about the outreach. So, the, so let's say, at least ninety days prior to the expiration, now, of course, in the situation, we have a vacancy, it's now. We, we put some minimums, minimum outreach that will be done. The clerk will post to the township website, Nextdoor account, and announce at regular board meetings the upcoming expiration of committee terms, provide the requirements of each seat, and encourage all eligible to submit an application form. It's gonna be like a one-page or we can have on the bulletin board. All township officers are encouraged to conduct additional outreach activities. Um, we wanna have some minimum recruitment that we do for all openings. So, Will, are you suggesting that you wanna do the minimum recruitment for those three bodies?
I'm, I'm not suggesting, personally, I'm suggesting that the supervisor, whoever is the supervisor, should be the person who is handling the appointments, that they have statutory authority.
No, for sure, I'm talking about the, um.
The outreach.
The outreach.
Right.
Are you suggesting that the outreach be bifurcated, like between the supervisor and clerk?
Yes, I think so, and, and I think the outreach could occur and should occur, um, on a regular basis. You know, regardless of who's doing it, the clerk or whoever's doing it.
And is there on the website, there's a checkbox for DDA, or, I mean, the same with the other?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, people.
I guess I could go there much.
Yeah.
In, in a sense, we have an ongoing opportunity and, and outreach, it's just that, you know, people have to come to the website in order to see it, I think what, what, um, Jessica's referring to is a more proactive kind of using like Nextdoor or Facebook.
So I'm saying the minimum for each opening, so.
Let's, let's say, yeah, but something really standard, so that we're treating all the committees.
So, I think it makes sense to have one person do it, we can split it across two, as long as there's a commitment by this board that, you know, we all agree that minimum outreach, however we define it, you know, will be done. So what do you think, Kathy?
That's fine, that's reasonable, that's fine. Um, I don't have a problem with that.
What do you think, Jillian?
Yeah, that's fine, but I do have a question, so let's say Donna wants to nominate her neighbor. How would Donna go about that? Because the, her neighbor would still have to apply, and then Donna would.
Nominate.
So how, just bring it to the board?
Put it on the board, Donna, yeah. Say, hey, let me nominate this person. Okay.
Yeah.
Just like leaving any item.
Well, presumably with this policy in place, everyone's gonna be more engaged and aware of when vacancies are occurring.
Yeah.
And, and in a position to, you know, take action in a timely manner, so once we know within that hundred and twenty days that there's a vacancy, that it's not a question of whether we're reappointing somebody, then anybody could say, Donna, or, or anyone could say to their neighbor or some resident that they know of, they think would be good. Um, hey, you know, I think you'd be good, fill out this application on our website, provide your resume or whatever, your summary of your background, and I will nominate if you are interested. And, and, you know, presumably that would spread some of the nomination effort around.
So, and the point we're talking about though is who's gonna do the outreach, because that's a chunk of work that needs to be done standardly, it's basically basic public noticing. I have right now that, you know, it's, you know, typically the clerk, I'm happy to share it as long as we've delineated it properly. So what is your proposal, Will?
Well, I guess my proposal would be that, um, we have ongoing effort to sort of have that, to create that pool of applicants who expressed interest, so there's always a message going out, maybe in the newsletter, on our website and so on. But that, um, if we, you know, identify a need to sort of do extra effort, that, um, like your policy says, if the, um, position is, any position except those that are pointed by the supervisor by statute, that the clerk would do it, and if it's those positions that are pointed by the supervisor, the supervisor would be.
And you'd be okay with, with the supervisor committing to this minimum outreach, at least ninety days before? It's what we discussed, I, I thought we had consensus on it, it's okay if we don't.
I just, I thought, I thought your policy applied to those other committees and boards that weren't appointed by the supervisor, so I'm, I'm comfortable with your policy applying to those, uh, boards and committees. I just, I wouldn't try to, you know, impose it on a supervisor for those positions that the supervisor is responsible for.
It's, it's just the outreach, and so I guess the problem for the board then is for the committees that anybody can nominate to, we're gonna be doing probably more standard outreach. And for the three committees that the supervisor appoints, that outreach could be as much or it could be less. So I'm just saying, if we, I think we should have some standard minimums, no matter who does it, what do you think, Joyce?
Well, I, I recall when we had the discussion on this side, we talked about this being the minimum.
Yeah.
So, beyond the minimum, I think the supervisor could do more outreach.
Absolutely.
The clerk could do more outreach.
Anybody.
Anyone on, on the board could do more outreach, but at a minimum, we're saying that's what we want to see happen.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think it's good to have a person responsible, just to make sure it gets done.
Do you think the clerk should be that person?
I do, I think it's in line with all the public noticing, um, it's easy, the old, I'm the one who's gonna be keeping this calendar. I don't wanna be in a, you know, I wouldn't want the clerk to be in the situation where. I don't want to be in a, you know, I wouldn't want the clerk to be in the situation where. You know. I mean, for the board, really, it just, I think if you want to, the board wants to hold somebody accountable to carry out some minimum level of activity, it's easier for the board to have. One person to hold accountable instead of two.
Are you okay with that, Wendy?
I I think there's a minimum level of outreach that should be done on an ongoing basis, and people can indicate, applicants can indicate whatever they're interested in. I think if we're going to um, you know, do some kind of extra outreach for um vacancies, that the person who um. If i- in the case of the supervisor, if their supervisor appointed by statute positions, that the supervisor should be responsible for that.
So are there instances where you would imagine doing less than this minimum? That's my concern, and a hypothetical scenario.
Uh, and you're talking about the supervisor position, so it it should be so we can just pass it off to the next. Board and the next board after that.
Right.
I mean, they can make modifications or just ditch it altogether, but I think that if there's something that works, I mean, it's just.
Right, it's just simple. It's not saying we're looking for an architect, right? It's not putting any judgment in saying. There's openings for the planning commission, you need to be a resident.
And everybody goes through the website to apply, no matter if we reach out to them or not, so I think that. You have a record?
Yeah. We could have pa- paper options too, of course.
Now. I have a couple of really quick things.
Awesome.
Go back up to the second, you're on the right page, number three?
Yep.
Does it, does yours still read trustees does not confirm?
Oh, yeah.
It should be do not.
Thank you, Donna. It's actually a carryover from the last, it's an unfortunate page break, says if the Board of Trustees does not confirm, so if the board does not.
Okay, but at that, I, my concern is the word, it should not be does, it should be do.
Okay.
And then let's go down to, it would be the fourth.
Yep.
Paragraph. Uh, current committee chairpersons are encouraged to provide township officers relevant information to assist.
Yeah.
Rather than the the way it was proposed. It does, it makes more clarity.
Yeah, and and Donna. Is that the version from November? Because I think we may have.
It could be.
A great concern, Donna, so.
That's okay, these are things I had made notes of.
No, these are great.
Okay.
You know, what what we changed the language, we moved that sentence, but what it says now is the board encourages committee chairs. To engage the member whose term is expiring in a discussion about the appointment. So presumably it'd be about things like attendance, continued interest.
Okay, so that other, that one line about strict, strict.
That word.
It's strict. He says it was written with this. English teacher teaching is coming out.
No, that's good. So then our goal would be that sixty days prior to the expiration of a term. The board shall hear nominations and vote to appoint members to each expiring committee seat. So that's a goal, so that, and why within sixty days? Because. You know, we typically have two board meetings a month. By the time scheduling happens, the goal is to have somebody appoint us just before the term is actually expired.
Yeah, it's good to be proactive on us.
Have a plan and just.
And then the last one is just some basic courtesy follow-up. Saying like. Thank you for um. You know, we we considered you, um, you weren't selected. Um, confirm their interest for future committee openings and share upcoming opportunities. Yeah. Because I know we've had people apply who never hear anything back, and we don't want.
We also have to let the person know who was appointed.
Well, yes.
If anything, it happened in the past, there was somebody that got, we we thought that we had.
Yeah. Well, I think that is one of the benefits of having a uniform policy where you identify someone who's gonna take charge of that. Well, I see that we are at the end of our time for this special meeting, so perhaps we should um adjourn the special meetings.
We have a flagrant motion to adjourn.
So.
Well.
Oh, somebody did?
I think.
That was my motion.
Splintoff makes the motion, you can be, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Okay, we are adjourned, I guess, seven o'clock. Seven o'clock and um, and I heard a request for a five-minute.
Five minutes.
Five-minute break, um, so we'll we'll start our regular meeting a little bit late, uh, so allow for a little bit of. Thank you.